In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Code 1975 and Title of Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mail to the Nutley Son, the Star Ledger, the North Church, Harold Lou's, and the Nutley Journal, mail to the Nutley Township clerk, advertise the Nutley Son and Star Ledger, posted on the district website. This is an official lead. At the flags, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go home, Mr. Cleveland.
Mr. Balsam.
Here.
Mr. Parneswell.
Here.
Mr. Dancheck Martin.
Here.
Mr. Cora.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Scolera.
Here.
Ms. Sherman.
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Here.
I need an approval of the minutes that they were sent out.
Two.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Correspondent. Only favor.
Aye.
Correspondents.
We do not have the meeting.
Okay, folks, we're going to now go into the auditorium to go through the presentation part of the meeting, okay? For the people that are here, we should be... On head power or give me head power? Okay.
Thank you everyone. Thank you all for joining us. This is one of those few and far between unfortunately, exciting and fun evenings when we have a board meeting. We've got a number of recognitions, some super recognitions and some well-deserved teacher recognitions. I'm just going to speak very briefly. We don't do this enough. The people who make the district tick really are our staff members, our teachers, our support staff, and we don't always give publicly to recognize everything that they do. They do so much for our students and city of art administrators. So really, I want to say a heartfelt thank you to all of our staff members and really congratulate each of the honorees that have received their certificates and their recognition today. Before we get to that though, I have Mr. Williams who's going to kick us off with a nice student recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Lazovic. Last year around this time or maybe a little later, Mr. Simpo, John Simpo from the Nellie Historical Society came to my office and told me that this was going to be the year of the 90th anniversary of this building being put in place, constructed, and pointed out to me that there was murals, as we can see here, that were done by the students back in the day. And he had a wonderful idea, there was evidently a niche that was never painted, and asked me if we would consider putting together a mural committee to see if the students would have some interest in producing something that would be enshrined in time for the 90th anniversary. And along with Ms. Egan and a few other stakeholders, we met a bunch of times, and I just want Mr. Simpo to briefly describe kind of the historical side of it, and we would like to call up the winner.
So hi, my name is John Simpo, I'm the director of the Nutley Museum, and as Dennis said, in the hallways, there are on all three floors, there are two niches, they're six feet wide, they're really beautiful. They were done when this was of course the high school by students in 1936. So you've got a 1926 building here with 1934, 35, and 36 year olds by students. We found five year olds in six niches, so we had the idea to fill that last niche. We had that competition, and what I wanted to emphasize to the students is that it was great to join the other five students from the 30s in terms of the new mural, but our winner from the competition is also going to be joining the great tradition of Nutley art. You know, Nutley's got a great tradition of muralists, enclosure people who painted the World Book Historia in New York, the Luxembourg Palace over in Europe. Many of you have been to Grace Church in our own town, you see the beautiful murals that are there. So they are a part of the great tradition of Nutley, not only Nutley muralists, but Nutley girls as well. If you go into, you know, the WPA mural around Oakley in the post office. So that was the idea, it was to fill this niche and to get the students interested in Nutley history. And then the next item I just want to mention is the theme. The theme is also a great moment in Nutley history. It's a circus that was put on in Nutley in 1894, March 27th. It was an amateur circus. It was a way, it was a really beautiful idea, it was a way for the town to get a Red Cross Committee together, and this is a time when our town not only didn't have a hospital, but we didn't have plaster to make a cast for somebody, or a splint, or extra blankets. So the idea was to get a lending library in essence of all of these medical supplies for residents of Franklin Township or the strangers within their gates. And so it was that amateur circus. An amateur circus meant people like you who had trained on your front lawn to learn the trapeze, or to learn how to ride a horse bareback, and you would have come out to this great amateur circus that was done to get money for the Red Cross. So it was done over on Roche property, in what was called Eaton Stone's circus tent there. Great event, it was covered by the New York Times, by Harper's Weekly, big event, and so it's nice that the subject of our mural as well has to do with Nutley history. So again, we're hoping this year, I think by May of this year, we may actually be putting this mural up, and it will join the other ones, so 18 years later. So that's the project that we've been working on, and we have, I think there were 18 people from middle school, because of course, this is the middle school now, so we have the middle school and the high school. Students come together, I think we had 18 competition winners. And David Disdoray, who would stand up, is our competition winner.
Thank you.
And I have to tell you, it was a tough competition. All the students did great work, it was really exciting to see Nutley's young art community. So thanks.
And I'd like to thank Ms. LaPistato, Theresa LaPistato, and middle school art teacher, Ms. Rizzi, for their efforts, and David will be enshrined in Nutley history. So congratulations, David.
Huge congratulations to school. Long out last, all the people sitting in this room, so congratulations to you. For our second presentation, we're honoring an individual teacher, Mrs. Corovo.
Thank you. This year, the California Casualty Company sponsored a contest for teachers, and one of our teachers at Yanacow School was fortunate to be selected. Ms. Janice Shone received $500 gift certificate to plastic books so that she could purchase books for our school. So we're very proud of Ms. Shone and appreciate that she won this recognition. Ms. Shone, stand so we can see.
Just another example of all the different ways our teachers are going above and beyond. I'm sure you spent that $500 very quickly. So, well, thank you again, Mr. Williams, Mrs. Corovo, and now on to our honoring of our individual teachers and support staff members who distinguished themselves to their work this year. And again, it's a high bar. We have a wonderfully small community where people know one another and they care deeply about the students and the community as a whole. So to distinguish yourself and to really be seen as extraordinary in a district like this is truly an accomplishment, because all of our staff members really go above and beyond. To kick things off, I'd like to call up Mrs. Lorraine Stoudt, out of Kansas State.
Good evening, everyone. My first honoree for tonight, and I apologize for reading, Lorraine Rubenstein has a gift for teaching. She has the gift to motivate, inspire, and quietly lead her students to meet with success. Mrs. Rubenstein has shared this gift with her students for the past 20 years. Her colleagues respect and admire her, and her influence on the students whose lives she has touched continues long after they have left her classroom. I am proud to be able to say that I work with her every day. Congratulations, Mrs. Rubenstein. Thank you.
From my next presentation, few people have the vision that Denise Morando has. She has the ability to accommodate even when it isn't easy. Her personal commitment to the district, the staff, her students, and to me is second to none. She has inspired others through her quiet, reassuring, and encouraging words and actions to exceed expectations and succeed. It's my honor to work with her and to know her. Denise, congratulations. And now to present the awards for Radcliffe School, Mr. Carmen.
Good evening, everyone, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for hosting this wonderful evening. I do want to stop for a minute, and this is such a great evening to do that, to recognize one of, two of Radcliffe's All-Stars. We have a building full of All-Stars, but tonight I'm here to just talk about two of them. The first one, who I will talk about, is Nadia. She had a prior commitment that was set months ago and could not get out. Dr. Shari Budnik. Dr. Shari Budnik is our school's physical therapist. For those of you who are not all that familiar with Radcliffe School, we have a number of students with varying needs. Dr. Budnik is someone who you always want to have close by. She is so sincere when she worships her students and treats her students with a golden mind and gets so excited when her students achieve those benchmarks. Really remarkable, really remarkable. I also have to congratulate her and thank her for everything she does for the Spark Health Foundation. She spends countless hours preparing the special Olympics for all of our students, and it's such a wonderful event, it takes months to plan, and the kids feel like heroes and superstars, because that's what they are. And to Dr. Budnik's credit, we thank her. So congratulations. Nine years ago, I had the privilege of meeting a feisty, young teacher, Mrs. Danielle Monster. Her name was Papalardo at the time, since then she's married her high school sweetheart, Ryan. Congratulations to Ryan as well. And how do you describe Mrs. Monster? Aside from bicycle. Someone who has an incredible passion for technology, someone who has fused technology into all of her teaching, her style. As you walk through her room, the kids are having fun. In a sense, almost tricking the students into learning. It's an active classroom, kids are moving around. Charlotte Danielson would be impressed. Danielle, please join me.
I only had the opportunity to say a few great things about you. There is a laundress of things. I am so proud of the things you've accomplished, moving our district forward, fully embracing all the latest and greatest changes that we've made. So thank you, congratulations. Our teachers.
And now to present the school guard in the school, Mrs. Corovo.
He's a tough act to follow, thanks Mike. I'm quoting Michael over here, he said, "Tonight's kind of like the Oscars for teachers." So here we are, the Oscars for teachers, so congratulations, everyone. I'm proud to be the Spring Garden Schools Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Claire Menza. Mrs. Menza has been teaching the district for 24 years, and during this time she has touched so many lives with her kindness, sincerity, and calmness. She has an advocate for what really interests kids, and they always come back to find her. She has earned the respect of all her colleagues in our community. She's a lifelong learner who participates and really feeds our school in her quiet, gentle manner. So congratulations, Mrs. Menza.
Our next recipient has been serving as a paraprofessional in district for 12 years and 10 years at Spring Garden specifically. In addition to her role as a parent where she makes a mark in every classroom she hits, our teachers really respect her work and her commitment and her sincerity. She's also a lunch aid, and all our kids ask that she's on their shift. So, Mrs. Jones, Mrs. Patricia Jones, passion, professionalism, and pride in everything she does, and we're honored to have her as part of our staff as well. Thank you for your commitment, sincerity, and by the way, happy birthday. So happy birthday, Mrs. Jones.
I'm going to call Mr. Jones up to come on up for Washington School.
So far tonight, so eloquently put, we have heard about what it takes to be an effective educator. The people tonight who receive these awards live to bring out the very best in each of their students. Each person in the room tonight can remember that one special teacher who inspired them beyond all others. That teacher who brought out the very best in you, the teacher who made learning fun, the teacher who worked every day to teach and challenge the future for us all. Ms. Dana DeJocomo is such an educator. Dana, congratulations. Your commitment to the students of Washington School and your ability to always go above and beyond is an inspiration to every educator, parent and student. Thank you for your service to Washington School and congratulations.
I'm also very proud of our educational service professional who is this year's award winner from Washington School. Mrs. Debbie Amoroso could not be with us this evening due to a family emergency. However, she called me this afternoon and wanted me to relay her most sincere appreciation. Mrs. Amoroso is a learning disabilities teacher consultant at Washington School. She has worked as a teacher in the Nutley School District and now focuses all of her energy and expertise on helping the most needy of our students. Mrs. Amoroso is a consummate professional who always goes beyond expectations to support students, teachers, and parents. Congratulations, Mrs. Amoroso, for that. I'd like to invite Mrs. Corovo from Yanacow School for those presentations.
There are many thoughts on the essence of what really makes a great teacher, and one of my favorite sentences from Albert Einstein, who said about himself, "That he did not simply teach, but he provided the conditions in which his pupils could learn." Pamela Van Schelder Mitchell is one of those teachers who provides conditions that extend beyond her classroom. Her planning, her way of letting her students know that she cares, and inspires them to try their best. Her communication with families, her being a mentor to new teachers, and a confidante to colleagues, both new and long-term. Her dedication to professional development, her work on numerous committees and district initiatives. Pam has truly earned the distinction of Educator of the Year, and I speak on behalf of our entire staff when I say that we appreciate all that she does for us every single day. I'm very happy to have the opportunity to recognize the work of one of our paraprofessionals. The best paraprofessional is actually one who remains unnoticed in the classroom, discreetly ensuring that the student is focused on the work, or noticing the signals that the student needs assistance or maybe a break, at the same time preparing his work seamlessly with the classroom teacher. Mr. David Lussi has been this consistent, inconspicuous support for several students at Yanacow School, and he has truly made a positive impact on their learning and their lives, and I'm happy to be able to recognize Mr. Lussi this evening. Thank you. I'd now like to introduce Ms. Egan.
I'm honored to be able to present two Middle School Educators of the Year. Our first recipient is integral to the learning process. As a member of the Child Study Team, she assists teachers and parents in finding the best ways to reach students who may have difficulty learning. She is an advocate for all of our students and helps them find their way through the difficulties of being middle school-aged. Whether she's holding a social skills group session, testing students to determine strength and weaknesses, or offering emotional support to them, students have a better school day because of her interventions. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Ms. Erin Sheridan, School Psychologist. Our next recipient understood... Our next recipient understood exactly what it means to be a middle school teacher. His passion for social studies was contagious. In his class, students learned through his fantastic storytelling. I practiced this, really. Every conversation, regardless of topic, became a history lesson both in and out of the classroom. Walking down the hallway with him, or really anywhere for that matter, was like being on an episode of Cheers. Everybody was named and yelled at, "Ah!" wherever he went. He would give a wave and a smile. He loved to be here every day in his shoe. Our middle school teacher of the year is Mr. Megan Malone.
Congratulations, everybody, winners tonight. We were able to pick two for the governor this year, and it was an honor for me to pick my two, my teacher and my support staff, I'll go with my support staff person first. This paraprofessional is dedicated to facilitating a community of learners in my building. This paraprofessional supports her students with a smile every day. This paraprofessional supports her department and her teachers every day. This paraprofessional lights up the world with her smile. This paraprofessional is very venerable. This teacher, to me, has appeared defined what a reflective practitioner should be. This teacher is focused on providing what's important to her, all of her classes, from her Janet to her AP, and she gets the highest scores per district every year. This person, this teacher, this individual moves and energizes those around her because of her reflective practice. Her students are lucky to have her, we are lucky to have her in this district, and she has produced some serious scholars. This teacher is Ms. Jen Reyno.
If you take a really good look, you can see so many different individuals over here. It's nice to see how many different types of people with different passions, different backgrounds come together and form this community. I add my congratulations and my sincere thanks for what you do every single day. You absolutely earned the distinction, a teacher and a support staff. Thank you so much.
I would like to thank everyone for coming out and supporting our staff members. At this point in time, the board meeting is going to return to the choir room. Everyone is certainly welcome to join us or to proceed. Red doors and enjoy the rest of the evening. Thank you all for coming.
We're having a presentation from Chartwells, are you ready ladies?
Oh, we're ready.
Okay.
Do you want us to start?
Yes, ma'am. If you're ready to go.
We're ready.
Can everyone sample the food outside? It's there for your pleasure.
Hello, everyone, I'm Pat Alagretto from Chartwells. I'm the district manager, and we're going to do a presentation for you this evening on our Nutrislice program, which we just added to the district. This is Krista Peterson, she's our dietitian, and Lisa Lutz, who is the site director here every day. There is a complimentary table out there with fresh fruit and water and some samples. So, Krista.
Good evening, everybody, how are you all doing? Finally, going over the cold weather portion, it's nice to look outside and feel a little spring. So I'm the registered dietitian, I'm Krista Peterson, I'm actually at the account in Woodbridge, New Jersey, and I've come here to present Nutrislice because this is an exclusive partnership that Chartwells has with Nutrislice. So as you can see, it's a digital menu, it's currently connected, it's fresh technology, you can access it on your phone or iPad. I personally have the app, and it's very easy to access anytime, anywhere. So it's going to be an opportunity for us to communicate effectively to parents, to nurses, to teachers. nurses, to teachers, to students, to kids. It's us with the PDF, what we actually serve, and then the parent's perception of what we serve. But this is getting rid of that mystery and putting it all in our fingertips. As mentioned, it's going to be very easy to access. You could access it online, and I will show you how we will access it via your website. It's also accessible on your mobile phone, so you do download it from the iPhone. I have it on the app. It's got a different picture now, it's a watermelon. Then, you can have an email to you, and you can also download a PDF file. So, when you go onto this interactive menu, this is what it would look like. That's how it is on the phone. It has the total calories, the fat amount, the fiber content, as well as many other nutrient concerns that one may have. But it also goes a little further into detail with some allergies and carb counts, which I'm going to. This is our way of communicating to everybody. We plug everything into what we call nutrition. So, this is how we, as food service directors or as a food service company, place and put all of our menus in. Nutrislice basically translates that to everybody to make it more effective for them to understand. This is my favorite part, navigating the food allergies. How many of you have someone or know someone that has food allergy? Everybody. And it's interesting to see how it's growing. So, we're trying to make it easier to interpret the food label, but trying to interpret it for the children because we understand how important this is. And we don't want an issue to occur. So, there is the eight common allergens. This will be accessible in the top right corner, so you'll see the filter allergies: dairy, egg, wheat, soy, peanuts, tree nuts, fish, shellfish. That individual who has a wheat allergy, you would just press that button, and it will filter through, getting rid of any food items on that menu that has the wheat. So, then you can make this selection along with the nurse and your child, or the student, what they can have for lunch that day. We also have a language translation, so it goes 21, about 21 languages, different languages that it will translate to, but fun as in through Google. And you just allow it for about five to 10 seconds for it to translate, and it will translate into the designated language. This is also an opportunity for us as a food service to promote our message. We have nutrition education widgets on them. So, for example, this month or the coming March is cruciferous vegetables, so we'll have little bits of information that you could, we can click how much the lunch prices are, the available dates, any other promotions going on that best fits the culture of the school. So, they'll have meal prices, newsletter signup sheets. I know in the future, the dietitians, the regional dietitians have created little videos, little nutrition education videos, so maybe how to peel a zucchini, or how to carve a pumpkin. So, that'll be coming in the future as well. This is the app, but it's now in the watermelon form that you can just download on your iPhone. So, does anybody have any questions?
So, if a parent wanted to log on to your website to see, first of all, what grades does this cover?
It covers, it covers all the elementary schools, all the middle schools, all the high schools, so all of the schools.
Okay. And the parent wants to log on to find out about their nut allergies to the children, they would log on to Nutrislice or nutrition?
I could show you. Would you like me to? On the computer?
It's on your district website, like if you go under parent and you go to your school, but you could also do it through the phone app if the mobile app if you choose to. So, you know, Lincoln School, the parent would go there, the menu comes up, and then they can navigate that way.
It's not that big of an issue, as long as they have access to it.
Yeah.
So, the students can also download it from the device?
Absolutely. And it'll show them the lunch menus and nutrition messages.
So, you'll go on your website, you're going to click under parents. School Lunch Program will be the next tab, and this is how to access it, right here. Click here for school menus, and this will take you to the Nutrislice. Now, let's say that you want to view the high school. You'll click Nutley High School. Then, you will click to lunch, and then it shows it up right here. Well, for the allergy portion, you're going to go in the top right corner, use special diets, and go, you want to agree to this. I agree. You're going to press egg, and you see how it got rid of all the food items that have eggs? So, you'll see that now that person, what the individual can enjoy without egg or wheat. Another feature that I really enjoy specifically for the nurses, which I've had, is those for diabetes and carb counts. So, this will, right here, view carb counts. We'll download a PDF that you can, so you'll do print carb counts, and this will be an opportunity for the nurses to be able to properly do insulin ratios, insulin to carb ratios for the child that may have diabetes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Pat, this is, thank you very much.
Thank you. There was some flyers.
Yeah, more information on the Nutrislice, so nice to see everybody.
Thank you again. Mr. Lussi, great to meet you.
First and foremost, I know people may not be aware, I just want to thank everyone involved in the education funding, the members of the board who also sit as trustees or members of the various committees, and certainly all the local community members, parents and otherwise, they're giving up their time. That's a really big steps forward. We have a foundation, I know that right now we're hiding our logo all over the place. People are out there checking for it to bring some awareness, and I want to thank everyone who's really been involved with that. The impact of the organization's work has already been felt in the schools, and I'm only excited about what's to come. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to just reiterate for the board members and just kind of a closure of what happened at Spring Garden School over the break. Again, that was an internal issue, really a plumbing issue, which created the issue in those three classrooms on the floor. I really want to thank Mr. Nicolette, Mrs. LaGuardia, the teachers who came in over break to make sure that when the student returns, it was for them as much as possible as if nothing happened. Our building and grounds crew worked tirelessly between Mrs. James, Dr. Huang, and me making the phone calls. It really was handled, we were lucky to have it over break, so we'd get everything back and can structural order before the kids came back in. And just want to reiterate to everyone that between our facilities and grounds folks, people, talent, and insurance, there was absolutely no structural issues caused by this purely internal localization in the building, and it was correct. So, just want to thank everyone for their efforts in that. Sticking with facilities, just really quickly, you know, Mrs. James is going to be discussing the construction project bits, and hers, so I'll defer her on that. Want to remind everyone, it is that time of year again, and so we have our academic booster clubs fair coming up, yes? Is that in our presentation?
Nineteen.
Nineteen? Across the street, so we're looking forward, as always, to that. And can't seem to fix this conflict, but at the exact same time again, our annual March Madness Basketball Tournament will be going on here. Coaches are working with the students as well, so I'm anxious to see it. It's a big day to be in Yanacaw, so I'm looking forward to that whole process. Registration has kicked off tonight. Kindergarten registration is scheduled for this week, beginning the 29th, across the street at the high school. Four o'clock to 7:30. Packages are available always on the district website. I did get the wonderful news that people like to come to Yanacaw, because apparently from our initial numbers, it's going to be banner year. So, all the good things that come with that. Preschool registration will take place later in the spring after kindergarten registration process has gone through, and as always, we're registering new students for any of the other schools beyond that, around the clock. Our law fair competition, back in January 27th, students in each of our elementary schools participated in the law fair's Mark Trop competition in district. Each school's case was submitted to New Jersey Bar Association for submissions, and they will be evaluated in the upcoming months, so we'll be looking forward to discussing how that goes. I want to thank Mrs. Ristel and all the staff at Lincoln School for their fun run, which took place on the 20th. The entire student population participated in the run, which was a sight to see, with each student running a minimum of 35 laps around the gym. As they ran, they were being cheered on by those classmates who at the time were not running, as well as parents and teachers, support staff, and the rest. Commissioner Rogers and Bernie, becoming a fixture around our elementary schools, the dog, were also present to cheer them on, and the PTO had a pledge profit of over $16,000 to date, and I'm excited you're still coming. One of my favorite things to talk about this year, the NHS, first, their initial year, the robotics team, also known as Anonymouse. They competed at my alma mater, Wayneville High School on the 30th, that high school on the 31st. They did not place in either of these, but they've been showing gradual improvement being the first year. It's quite a sight to see them really competing with these teams that have been around for a decade. I'm just, again, only excited for the future as things continue forward. For the board, again, district note, Thursday, the 4th, we actually met with our full district evaluation advisory committee as required by State Code. Afternoon, we reviewed the current model, including this year's changes, how the implementation is going. We're looking at specific data, and most importantly, discussed the release, which should happen later this month, of the student growth percentile information, and therefore the median student growth percentile information for teachers, which will, in March of 2016, finally close the evaluation process for the 2014, 2015 school year. Some important dates coming up, again, our bottom of ESL Parent Advisory Committee's meetings, 6:00 PM at the high school, next one is March 31st. We talked about kindergarten orientation, and those dates are all on our website. Sixth grade parent orientation is coming up already, and here we are talking about the Junior Olympics, May 27th. To give everyone another heads up, our single window for art assessments this year, 3 through 8, April 4th to May 13th. And at the high school, April 11th through May 20th, we are working again in conjunction with all the buildings to ensure the least amount of lost instructional time as we share technology and schedule those assessments. And open house dates, which are on the website, middle school, September 15th, elementary school, September 21st, high school, September 22nd. I simply highlight them to remind everyone how far into the 15, 16 school year we are, and we are already obviously planning to have a 16, 17.
Thank you, Mrs. Lussi.
Thank you. There are several resolutions on this evening's agenda, most notably the bid results and the award contract for the new security entrance at Spring Garden School. If you recall, we did have a bid last year, but at which time we did not receive any bids from any contractors. The project was modified slightly and went out to bid in January. We had three bidders, and this evening, the board will be approving a contract to award to Cyprico Industries. We're looking for that project to start as soon as students are no longer in the building at Spring Garden, where we will be reconfiguring a main entrance with a security entry there, as well as reconfiguring the lobby area and the main office, and the principal's office, as well as the CST office. So, there'll be a lot of work going on at Spring Garden this summer. With respect to the high school security entrance, we did go out and bid twice. Both times, the bids came in, which far exceeded our budget. After the second bid, the board crew negotiating with contractors. All of the contractors that had bid on the project previously were contacted. Two of them showed interest in the project, but only one ultimately did bid on it. And after negotiations that were concluded by the architect, as well as Mr. Nicolette, we have now reached a final number of $163,500 to make that secure entrance at the high school. That project hopefully will start sometime during the school year and be finished before the summer, well, before we get well into the summer. The finance committee, along with Superintendent, and I have been working tirelessly on the budget development for the 16, 17 school year. We will be presenting a tentative budget at the March 14 meeting, and more information will be provided that evening as well to the public. And the final public hearing on the budget will take place on April 20th. We are also going to approve this evening one of the projects that we will be working on over the summer, which has been a long time coming, and that is to have all of the lockers throughout the high school rehab. Funds for that project will be coming from our maintenance reserve account.
Thank you, Ms. James. Committee reports. Ms. Sherman.
The academic committee met on February 16th. We discussed an agreement for consultant services with Dr. Goldberg for special development sessions. We discussed educational services agreement, science instruction, mainly management of science materials for 2015 and 2017. We discussed adjustments to the high school calendar, specifically for May 25th and 26th to accommodate, could be a delayed opening, to accommodate biology competency assessment testing. We discussed the Yanacaw School Service Learning Project, instructional technology devices usage. We also discussed the academic committee's presentation schedule for going forward, the middle school strategies program, pressure on the middle school model, some budget issues, and the advertised overnight field trips that are provided in the agenda panel.
Thank you. Ms. Dan, turn to you.
The low range facility planning committee met on Thursday, February 23rd. We heard presentations from Joseph DeCara of DeCara Ravino, and the principals of the middle school, Yanacaw School, and the high school on the current challenges facing each building. We met again on Thursday, February 25th, to walk through the high school, to survey the building. And we also met tonight and discussed how to most efficiently and effectively act to establish clear goals and establish a process moving forward. We also discussed how to best inform the community of the existing situation, forecast the challenges, and to solicit input from the community members in the development of our solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Slaughter.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administrative committee met on February 24th at 5:00. We had an athletic update. Mr. Lodge and myself updated the committee on the current season, including Blair Watson's accomplishments, we performed our basketball, hockey, and wrestling teams. The committee discussed the 2016, 17 coaches, and the challenge of getting and retaining coaches who do not work in the high school. Future committee meeting dates were established for the remainder of the year. We had a legal update from some of the current legal matters we have open under personnel. It was an update on the superintendent search. Mr. Lodge, update timeline of Dr. LeBraire, who's doing our search and our background for the candidates. The committee discussed the inclusion of the special education process, and I believe Dr. LeBraire had that meeting tonight. Review of recommended candidates. The committee discussed potential hiring of the 2016, 17 school year. Review of agenda materials, reviewed the draft material for the administration and personnel committees that run the agenda tonight. Reviewed the draft policies and regulations that also appear on the agenda tonight. Committee discussed how to prepare a more efficient calendar of events for board members. The members discussed storage issues, especially for athletics, as well as the maintenance of the locker space by the district, but also by the athletes and the coaches. The members discussed the relationship between the district and the Nuthy Educational Foundation, as well as current funding by the Nuthy Educational Foundation, new district initiatives. Our next committee is March 1st.
Thank you, Ms. Slaughter. Mr. Slaughter.
Ms. Lussi and Ms. James presented an updated preview of the 16, 17 financial budget. Mr. Brown provided the committee with the provided maintenance measures that are being undertaken on all the heating and air conditioning units throughout the district. undertaken on all the heating and air conditioning units throughout the district. Mr. Nicolet reviewed the recent incident at Spring Gardens, the third phase of the Tahoe replacement that took place during the winter break at Radcliffe School. He also reviewed the state of projects that will take place over the summer. We heard from representatives from DeCara-Rubino, which was included, as Ms. James just worked. Regarding the deal with the high school regarding security, Ms. James presented finance resolutions that we're going to have to hold on tonight. The committee discussed the bus lot, revised 15, 16, and 16, 17 academic calendars and the extended day financial report. This meeting was held on the 23rd at 4:00.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulation 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign it with a sigil before you take the microphone. First person can come forward. Are you coming forward, Mr. Rogers?
I have a question about the line items on the budget. Is that part of this or is what a resolution?
It's on our resolution tonight.
Oh, okay. Yeah, of course.
Yes.
Thank you. The cash report, appendix B, it says that special revenue fund, see page two. There's no page two, but against my question is, it says receipts are $5,253,253,000 and then dispersments are $5,602. How are dispersments more than receipts?
That's the kind of business we want to run. Mrs. James, can I ask that?
We receive IDEA money, which is restricted funds from the government, as well as no child left behind funds. We must expend those funds first and then we apply for reimbursement. So that's why the expenditures will always exceed, will always be higher than the reimbursements.
Okay, and it's because of IDEA funds?
They're mostly IDEA and no child left behind.
And where do those funds go?
IDEA is strictly used for special education.
Okay.
We primarily use that money for paying out of district tuitions and related services and supplies.
Okay.
And no child left behind is used for Title I, Title II, Title III, professional development and some salaries and supplies.
And what is that number for this pay period? Where is that? Because it says see pay.
When you're looking at the treasurer's report.
Yeah, you see where it says special revenue fund? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
And so you're saying that that is $102,000? That's received monthly from the federal government?
We receive the money after we expended. We have to apply for reimbursement.
I was just looking for what the total number was.
Oh, the total number, the total number of the grant, they're both grants, so that total number will not be reflected there. That's just strictly a cash.
Okay, so I couldn't see what that would be. Where is page two? It says see page two. Special revenue fund, see page two. Want me to show you?
If I know where she's reading, I have to. I don't have a page, a copy of page two either in my report. I'd have to get that and I can send it to you.
Okay, that would be great. We had just said see page two and like I kept looking for page two for a special revenue. I'd like to understand that. And then another question relates to our legal expenses. There's one for this month for Schneck Price Smith and King for $10,000. Is that ongoing litigation or is that his current expenses? $10,000?
Yes, some of that is current expenses and some of it is ongoing basis.
And then Connolly, they are not our normal attorneys, right? What does that litigation relate?
Construction.
That's construction litigation related to?
The DCM with the architects during the 2004, '05, '07.
That was the Tri-Tech issue?
They were related with the Tri-Tech issue.
So in 2016, we were still paying $13,000 a month in legal fees for construction issues? Litigation related to construction? In 2004, we are paying $13,000 this past month in 2016 for litigation from 2004?
It's litigation that resulted from the construction projects when they were working for the district.
And that was 2004, '05 and '07, I believe, so they're all related, but yes, we are.
Okay, so this is still ongoing litigation?
Correct.
That we are paying for the issues related to the construction problems that happened in 2004?
'04, '05 and '07.
'04, '05 and '07. Is there any indication of when these $13,000 a month expenses that could be going into the classrooms are going to go away?
We are, we are closer than we've been in a long time trying to resolve that issue. It's not a monthly cost. It's $13,000 this month. It varies on whatever the kind of folding ends up before the judge, whatever that monthly fee is. But yes, we're closer than we've been in a long time to resolve it as we all wish to get it resolved the sooner the better.
We may consider another law firm? This has been going on a while.
They are not, they're not our law firm anymore.
Connolly?
Just through the construction issue that we're dealing with from '04, '05 and '07.
Okay. Well, hopefully, I'd love to see that money go into the classrooms. And on that issue, I opened the plans for DeCara-Rubio for the addition over on Franklin Avenue, the expansion, the middle school expansion. And the Oprah was denied. And I would like to hear from the board why a taxpaying citizen was disallowed to see the plans that were submitted for expansion that ultimately is going to come before the taxpayers to pay for. And when do you intend to have input from parents other than parents who sit on the committee? Because I asked Mr. Klein, and he, when I asked him what parents had been able to look at the plans, he told me that the parents that were on the committee, of which he was a parent, which I appreciate and he's good at. I would like to know, A, as a taxpayer, why I was denied being able to see those plans? And B, when do you intend to let the taxpayers and the parents see these plans?
Obviously, you were not listening when Mrs. Dancheck gave her report.
I was listening. I was obviously listening.
Well, she made it very clear that the conversation with the taxpayer will proceed as soon as the entire board has seen those plans. The entire board has not seen the plans as of tonight.
Can I ask you a question? There were three plans submitted. Have you seen any of the plans?
We've seen multiple plans.
Okay, so you have seen plans.
The entire board has not seen multiple plans.
And as of right now, they're just concept drawings. They're not really plans. There's still a lot of open questions that we have to discuss with the public and also with other stakeholders. So we don't really have plans. We have concepts that we really have to look through still. I mean, it's still very.
Because I recall in a Nutley Sun article, you quoted President Kozinski as saying that you had what was anticipated would happen, there would be three stories with 21 classrooms. So at some point, you obviously saw plans, you had three stories with 21 classrooms, which was what you said was anticipated would be there at the property, quoted in the Nutley Sun.
Yeah, you could call them plans. We call them concepts because nothing is title wise yet. As the, as the board meets, as a nine-member board, and they have their input, they might, the board might decide, we can do better with 16 rooms. When we go to the public, which is all part of our process that we're moving through, but you need to understand that the entire board needs to see the concepts first. And then in all due respect, the commissioners, who are a very active part of our community and have purchased the property where we hope to do our expansion, need to also have their input on the concepts. And then the citizens, we plan on having multiple meetings with citizens to get their input on the concepts before we put any final concept plans together.
Okay, so you are intending to take one or two or three concepts to the community and ask for their input?
Of course, of course.
Wonderful, thank you. I appreciate that. And then the final question I have is about the search. Thank you for allowing us to have comment with Dr. LaBrera. Very interesting and I learned a lot. At the time of the public comment of the public input, he said that once all the input was brought together from the websites of the questions that were asked, that you as a board would have three choices with what to do with that input. And I did run into him in town and he said he was just elated.
Heard you.
Where, where is this?
Oh, hey, I was just talking about you.
That's why I was trying not to listen. I always worry that, you know, no one's good friends, you know? If you didn't know I was here, I was worried about what you might say.
Miss Landry, and not that I don't mean to cut you off, okay? We will answer all your questions. That is not on our resolution items tonight, so if you want to come back up, we can continue our conversations on only resolutions.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on to resolutions? You getting up to speak, Mr. LaBrera? Or are you just going to?
I'm just late.
Talking to one of my friends. Mr. Sherman, you take academic, please.
President, I can move academic resolutions, 1 through 7. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bassama?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sallow?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scherer?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. Mr. Scherer, will you take administration resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I can move administration resolutions, 1 through 4, as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bassama?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sallow?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scherer?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. Mr. Klein, you take finance resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President, I move finance resolutions, 1 through 19, as written.
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion. I have one question, Ms. James. I see the donations here. Do we acknowledge that donations through a, through a vacuum letter? I assume we do, but I mean, do we send them a letter or?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I have one other, something else I want to add. The approval of the license for use of the parish parking area, can you explain that to the Nutley Sun or publicly a little bit, why we're doing that now?
The original license that we had for use of the parish parking at Holy Family for our buses expired on December 31st of 2015. For the past almost a year, I guess, you, Mr. Kozinski, as well as several other members of his board, have been diligently looking at every alternate space that either came to your attention or that you were able to find as a place for us to park our buses. And at this point, we are left with no other options, so we are going to be re-entering into a new lease with Holy Family. They are currently having the lease renewed by the partializes.
I think along with that, we need to mention the buses on Bloomfield Avenue, that they're right now being parked by Commissioner Tucci's baseball parking lot, for lack of a better term, which is going to start being used by the public for the park, for the baseball practice. So our hands are kind of tied on moving the buses back to the original location, but we are continuing to look as a board to find a more appropriate area, but we need to go through that process. Any other discussions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bassama?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sallow?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scherer?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. Mr. Klein, you take personnel resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move personnel resolution 1, as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Bassama?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sallow?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scherer?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related plans. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. The first person wishing to say something can step forward and sign in.
Terry Corr, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for the Nutley Parent Advocacy Network. Haven't been here in a long time, Mr. President. I apologize. I do have a question, though. Back in September, I had attended a meeting and during the meeting, the mandatory statements, it listed that Christopher Galena had received $121,000. And I was kind of stuck in my head as to why that was happening. So I put in an Oprah request that went through an attorney review and I was told that the settlement statement, I had asked for the settlement statement for the check, all written correspondence between the district's attorney and Mr. Galena's attorney, a copy of the check. And I did get a statement back from Mrs. James and she said, this is coming from attorney review, that the information you see is a student record. So here's my question, it's very simple, yes or no. Is, has, or is or has Christopher Galena ever been a student of the Nutley Public School District? That's my, my question, yes or no?
I can't comment on standing as a student or not being a student.
Okay, so here's my, my next concern is that when I have ever had information, and in fact, it's on page 14 of, of your resolutions, when it talks about a student record and it's in regards to a settlement, it actually listed the student's number. And that's how I've always seen any type of identifying factor when it comes to a student. They're never, never, ever listed. And it was always my understanding that it was, it was a breach of confidentiality in regards to students. So that's why, when I read this, I thought, oh my goodness, because this, in just actually saying his name and stating that he is now a student, that's a breach of confidentiality. So if you're not able to tell me if he is a student or not, that's.
I didn't say his name or confirm or deny anything you said. I'm not even firm in specific, have to look at the resolution, but if your question is about process, we generally do always use the student's identification.
Oh, absolutely, yes. I can say that. And that's why I felt it was very strange for, for the attorney to state that this was student record, knowing that it stated his name. That's my question. I do have a question, when Ms. Landry brought up about the preliminary plans. When that comes to be, when we're able to see them, how do we go about seeing them? Do we have to go through an Oprah request? How does that work? Do we show up? Like?
You're talking about the plans, the concepts that we're looking at for the middle school. Once, and I, once the entire board has sat down to look at the concepts, which will be shortly, then after the board has had their input, then we will be meeting with the commissioners to also give the commissioners their input on all the concepts that we've looked at. When, when we have a general, general feeling that we're comfortable with a certain concept, then with all the concepts, then we'll be brought to the public also to get your input on what you think will best work for our students at the schools we're looking at. And that'll be an open forum. We will advertise as much as we need be. We're hoping to have two or three, as many as necessary, to involve the public in their taxpayer dollar being spent to put in.
You guys did a great job of getting the word out there for the survey, and you're pretty happy with that, right?
Oh, very much so. It was as impressive a response as I've ever seen.
So of the 575 people who provided input, ideas, suggestions, as Dr. Labrera explained it, you, as our elected officials, Board of Education, had three choices. One, do nothing with the input from the 500 people, which I know isn't even an option, as Dr. Labrera said as well. The second option, which was given to you, was you have Dr. Labrera create kind of a Cliff Notes synopsis-
Summary.
Summary of the input. And then the third option was to provide to those who were interested, all of the comments, unabbreviated, unedited, as is, if someone wanted to read the 500 pages or not. My question is, which of the three did you choose?
We haven't yet. I don't think all of our board members have read the 500 pages yet. We're meeting with Dr. Labrera after tonight's meeting, and I'm sure at our next public meeting, we will have-
An answer of the three, okay.
Just some clarification. There were 575 people, more or less, because there were some duplicates in this, and you can't ever know, because we did ask that. The, what you're referring to is the document that reports everything that happened through this, and it's not 500 pages, it's 50.
Oh.
But it's still 50 pages.
50 pages.
And the board received this, as we had talked, last Friday, and they have a number of things that we're going to discuss, I believe, in executive session, because it has personnel ramifications, and then they're going to decide. But they really have to be able to, A, read it first, and then converse as a board to decide what they're going to do.
Okay, so for clarification, that brings up a different question. There are two obvious documents. One, which is the input just from the website. Then there is the 50-page document, document that Dr. Labrera put together, which is from all of his interviews, correct? Teachers?
Yes.
I know you met with Mayor Petracca and-
All of them, yes.
I appreciate Dr. Labrera, but address it to me.
All right, so, so I know you met with Mayor Petracca, and you met with teachers, you met with different people in the community, and all different people had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Labrera. And from that, he has presented to you to read a 50-page document. I am here requesting that, without any names, that it be edited, not to include any personnel information or whatever, that that document, the 50-page document, including input from all stakeholders, be available to the public. That is my request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak to the board? Mrs. Seach, you coming forward?
Chris, who's here, 61 Grand Avenue, Nutley. This year, around October, we started doing some, the Hour of Code, the national initiative that we had. From October to December, I was in many classes and had the opportunity to teach some coding. It's actually programming, but some parts were coding, but the process was wonderful. I enjoyed being with the students. And one of the sites that we used was called Tinker, T-Y-N-K-E-R dot com. And when I was on the site, I had the opportunity to enter a contest, and I want to tell you that I won the contest, and I want to show you a clue. It's a girl.
Not for this, Mrs. Seach.
It's a girl. This one, this one is a girl. Yeah, she's $130, and we won just one, but there were many teachers that already seen it, who have any ideas what they would like to do with it. So, thank you, and-
Is there a camera there?
There is a camera. The photos are taken, it's a low-end camera, but the photos we take, it has to be right over your head to take them.
Mrs. Seach, grab it, thank you.
Chris, who's here, 61 Grand Avenue, Nutley. This year, around October, we started doing some, the Hour of Code, the national initiative that we had. From October to December, I was in many classes and had the opportunity to teach some coding. It's actually programming, but some parts were coding, but the process was wonderful. I enjoyed being with the students. And one of the sites that we used was called Tinker, T-Y-N-K-E-R dot com. And when I was on the site, I had the opportunity to enter a contest, and I want to tell you that I won the contest, and I want to show you a clue. It's a girl. It's a girl. This one, this one is a girl. Yeah, she's $130, and we won just one, but there were many teachers that already seen it, who have any ideas what they would like to do with it. So, thank you, and- Is there a camera there? There is a camera. The photos are taken, it's a low-end camera, but the photos we take, it has to be right over your head to take them.
Mrs. Seach, grab it, thank you. You must like use of the work that you do with our children.
Thank you.
I know you, the hours you put in, it's fantastic. I appreciate the work that you've done for us all.
Thank you.
Mrs. Seach, as we talk separately, this is going to go a long way for proven to people that we're not watching everything that they do.
Low-end camera, I said, right?
Anyone else who wants to be heard? Is there any, all business to come before the board? Any new business? I just have one discussion, Mrs. Yeaman. I see that all of our students, all of our teachers have gone through the CPR training. Did we do the CPR, A and B training for upper stoners and ground crew and so on also?
To my knowledge, I don't believe they did formal training.
Can we?
Yeah, we could definitely look into it.
I'd like to see this one, anyway, okay? One other thing that I need to say, and I've said it to my board members personally, but and I appreciate the coverage that Nutley Sun gives us, but there's coverage in the newspaper that always says, Mr. Kazinsky this, and Mr. Kazinsky that, and I appreciate that. This, this board, this particular board, is by no means, Mr. Kazinsky, this, this board had more input than any board I've known since my, since I've been on the board 19 years in different parts. This board has input beyond me. And I know you know that, and I know our board members just want to make it clear that everything that, whatever you and I talk about in the newspaper, and I make it very clear, it's input of this board entirely. There's not a day that goes by that I don't talk to my board members, they don't talk to me, I literally make sure Mrs. Sherman's on her way to work between 8:00 and 9:00, and I get her. Mr. Cardisella, I can't get in until after 10:00. So Debbie Russo, I can always reach out for Mr. Klein, I got to get him before he gets into school in the morning. Mr. Sklera, we meet on the weekends, because I can't get him during the week. Ms. Dancheck, Mr. Bassama, the same way. I catch him at 11:30 break. So it's the entire board doing all this work, and I just wanted to thank my board members and make sure that it's not always Mr. Kazinsky. That's all. Where the Board of Education will be discussing matters of executive public discussion pursuant to NJ SA Kent Board as well. Now therefore, we resolve that the Board of Education recessed the closed executive session at this time to discuss students and personnel matters. We have further resolved that the results of the discussion will be made public by inclusion of the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. In motion. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you.